The way this works, I have to make sure I understand. You will go out now and look for bid process on the streets, but only to get, to make sure, to find out if we have enough money even to do and what we're going to say. Is that what, you can come back with a number.
Yeah.
To do one street, two streets, and go to two streets.
Exactly. So we'll figure that out.
That's easy.
And then through the bidding process, you have to advertise twice and blah, blah, blah. And then we'll have a bid up here. It'll be a super proposal if you want.
But you know, you know what's, what the dollar amount is standing at?
I, I thought it was nine, five thousand maybe? Was that hard?
I don't know. I don't know what's going to happen.
So I think you have to bid out something you have like a four, so legal received bid out. Then we don't have to.
The question I have is, what you just recommended triple pin, triple metal, coal stack, options to do. John McRae on the streets, um, triple wood and. I think you can bid everything to two coal stacks. That's the point of, that I would come to the council and say,
if you're a little bit more, you can go and get it all done now. That's the idea.
So, so what the engineer is telling you, is he, he's aware approximately what you have budgeted? He's identified routes which in his opinion are the ones that you should focus on for the purposes of seeking competitive issues. So if the council wants to move to a, to this, then there would need to be a motion authorizing you to develop a bid act to genericize us on bids. Now that doesn't obligate you to accept the bids or to leave the repairs. We're simply going out and obtaining the bids at this point. They may come in worse than expected. They may come in better than expected. That's the state. So, so right now, if any member of the council wants to make a.
What's watching Governor for a question, question?
Is there any way, I mean, most of these citizens don't know what this listing is. Is there any way we can have at least one public hearing, meeting, to where it can be shown to the citizens what his recommendations are? I mean, they're the only ones that, that have the sheet, so.
A lot of broad actually copies. I mean, y'all have, that's up to the council to decide that.
So what we're looking at, what he's asking now is what we talked about the other day, which is what the agenda I made, which can move forward with what this man recommended. This man is recommending that we do triple pin, triple metal, coal stack, the options to do. John McRae on the streets, um, triple wood and. As options to not m- mudding in the budget. So I'm going to call a motion to accept the demands.
I'll move, I'll make a motion.
Motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion and.
We have a motion that has been made by Councilman Trimmer to accept the.
Recommendations.
To accept the competitive bidding process for repairs of triple pin and triple metal with the option to do the two coal stacks. Triple wood and.
Triple eight.
Triple wood. Triple wood, okay.
You will look for soliciting bids once, if council persists.
Sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by John McRae. Call for a vote. All in favor?
No.
All opposed?
Aye.
You get to vote.
I get to vote. This is something we have been working on for quite some time. I have talked to several citizens in, uh, Geralco Nita, wanting to know, haven't forgotten about them. But if the belief always says we're going to start somewhere, we've been doing this for about, as John said, a year and a half. I hope you're all in favor of the forward motion. So being known, the Councilman McRae, Councilman Trimmer, Councilman Brucey voted in favor. Councilwoman Halesby and Councilman Fitz voted again. Hope she carries. Thank you, sir. All right, next item on the agenda. Is considered an active call to request a business permit. HPC Western Quarter Seventy-Five Forty-One Highway Eight Seven. Jeff and Jonathan Lee are on the.
Our committee.
Did I say that right?
Yeah. Well, yes.
That's okay. We all.
Yeah, we're, we're wanting to open a, the wise on your.
Please, please, please. We're trying to listen. Thank you.
We're, I guess Tommy Beaver opened a shopping center, or has a shopping center here on eighty-seven and, uh.
And, uh. It's by next to the air conditioning place. And what it is, is Kayla Beaver is going to open and move her medical center, the shed down the street. She, the building, and will be occupying, and the spaces she's not going to occupy, they will to move into.
Yeah, it's going to be a western store, Vegas boutique, and, uh, with oil field would have a lot of workwear in there too. The oil field, they have bar workwear.
Council discussion?
How soon are you going to want to meet her?
Well, since, uh, the next two or three weeks, probably as soon as you get the building, uh.
There's a problem right now with him and the city. Cause he was notified by the lady who's in the office pretty much ago. His landscape plan wasn't in there, and it's still not. And his building, his building and permit is open next week. And he's still not having things together, so I don't know where is that.
Okay.
We can't, we can't issue a permit unless, unless it has, you know, the planning that this is already taken care of and, and, you know, can we okay? Something like that here tonight.
Captain, I take the final, I take the final inspection has to be finalized. I don't believe so.
I mean, three, three months ago, he still hadn't come forward. They faxed him a letter last.
I don't think we have a problem getting a permit for that city business.
We're coming quick. We just got finished yesterday.
He walked in here yesterday. He was here yesterday, right? And he, uh, over the living, same thinker.
Only thing I can do at this point, um, if table takes this till next month, till we get the last thing, then finally, we have to wait for the final, final inspection and all that has to get done. If you can't, unfortunately, if not, if not issue that permit until the final process is done. So you're welcome, Mr. Trimmer, back in the room. They table it, all right, we'll go with the next. Okay, then I want to, now the motion that table this in the next meeting or something. Actually, if there are any more discussions now, I call for a discussion.
Well, I really opened my, my writing, my present. And we're going to initially open seven days late and then see which day the rest of us who assistance that. And, um, till about eight, eight to five, nine to six, ten to.
Probably ten to seven or something like that.
So you can catch workers and. Right. But we're not going to be open late to these.
Sounds like something we're looking for here, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, well, there's any discussion? Any more discussion? Then I have the motion to table this, um, HPC Western Quarter located Seventy-Five Forty-Two Highway Eight Seven to next month. Is ready?
Hopefully. Hopefully Tom.
Do you want to have a motion?
Yeah.
I'm making a motion there. Motion, for you to do this, council, I want to make a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilman by, uh, Mike Trimmer. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Talk to. Next item, uh, I agree, consider an active call, acceptance of the city audit for triple gear in the April project two thousand and fourteen. I did try to keep your name on, I forgot, I forgot, so please, please, please state your name for the record.
Sure. Please, Phil Vaughn, uh, Vaughn and Vaughn Associates. And this is the last fiscal year, so my report is getting a little bit stale, so I want to take it brief. But please, I'm here for your benefit, so if you have any questions, they're up to me. If you haven't answered any of these questions, we'll have a reason. Uh, but our role is to come and take cities, financial statements, issue minimum financial statements. And we've done that. We agree that these, this report are reliable. Of course, that's what you want. Again, we're looking at the last fiscal year. Obviously, you're going to cover many various that again, you should be worried about. Again, you're a small city, so you want to make sure that you're keeping an eye on your citizens and your citizens, your employees. A lot of duties are consolidated into one individual typically, and so you guys have a key role in keeping an eye on that completely. But just to point out a couple things in the report, we might call on, say, we're taking on that. Uh, page twenty-five, I'm going to bring that here, to compare the balance sheet for the city. So you can see where your balances were in the last two years compared to here for that. On that page, you'll see that your cash and certificates of deposit were full over six hundred and thirty-two thousand, which was an increase of about a hundred and seven thousand over the year before that. You have a little bit more of your assets and liabilities, which leads you towards the bottom of that statement, the total fund balance. This is what you have available to fund your future operations. So at the end of the last fiscal year, that number is the second number from the bottom, with six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Of that number, you have sixteen thousand that's tied up for specific purposes, leaving you with six hundred and fifty-two thousand that's available for any of city purpose that you'd like to fund. Now, based on that fiscal year, that six hundred and fifty-two thousand is about twenty-three months of your operating costs. So it's fairly healthy. Of course, that doesn't take you to account any, any of your road repairs if you wanted to, but I know that your current budget has about two hundred thousand, that you're intending on taking out of that fund balance to help fund some of these projects. I wouldn't recommend going below six months in that number. And again, based on that number, six months would be roughly, uh, about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So that would leave you the difference of four hundred and seventy-five that you would have to play with before you start getting to a situation where you have any excess fund balance to use. So flipping back just a couple pages, page twenty-one is the activity, the last fiscal year compared to your budget. And towards the top of page twenty-one, you'll see your total revenues were four hundred and eighty-one thousand, which was almost a hundred and thirty thousand dollars better than what you budgeted for. The main reason for that excess revenue was the closure of the CPSC fund. Since they drained that and distributed all the funds to the cities, you've got that as a one-time thing. It's not going to come back, but that's mainly why you were over the budget. When you start looking at your expenditures, your twelve expenditures, which is on the next page, page twenty-two, were twelve thousand. That was a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars less than what you budgeted. That's always a good sign. The main reason you were under budget was, uh, your street maintenance, which I'm assuming some of that was some projects that you didn't get in place that you weren't anticipating. But that left you at the end of the year, three hundred and twelve thousand, so throw that right from the bottom, better than you anticipated. So your original budget expected that you would drain your fund balance for about a hundred and seventy thousand, but you actually ended up adding to your fund balance by a hundred and thirty. So that's the positive three hundred and twelve difference that you added to your fund balance. But looking at these expenditures, most of them were pretty close to what you had budgeted and not too far off from the year before. Like I said, the real, the, the main difference was the street maintenance. So like all I want to touch on, unless you have any particular questions, happy to answer any.
Council, any questions?
I, I just had a question. The opinion would say unqualified opinion?
Yes.
With, can you explain to them what that means?
Sure. Uh, we take the financial statements, we do some testing on, and then we issue an opinion as to whether we think these numbers are reliable. So that's kind of an easy way to put it. And when you give a, an opinion on those financial statements, you might qualify it, or a new word is modified. You might modify and say, we agree with everything here except for certain things, or we could say we don't agree with them at all. There's too many errors. We can't issue an opinion. But we issued an unqualified opinion, which means we agree that everything is, uh, these are reliable figures and you basically came on them. So that's what you form.
Any other discussion? If not, a motion to accept, uh, the, the right group. To accept the city audit for fiscal year ending April thirtieth, year two thousand and thirteen. So we have a motion made by Councilman McRae, who has a second. Council, uh, Councilman Trimmer, call for a vote. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to raise against me. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. All right. Uh, Count, uh, Member One D, we are going to table Councilman D. Item D, on the turn, consider an active call on the government revised employee personnel policy. Going to motion to move that to next month also.
Yes.
D, who, John McRae, uh, make a motion to table the revised employee personnel policy to next month, who has a second?
I'll second.
Council, uh, second by Councilman Halesby. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh.
Yes, so see, see.
Did I give one? I should have did. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I should have. I spoke it off. My apologies. Consider an active call of request to extend the time period that the pod, the P, P, the pod is seven, seven, two, seven, triple pin, and be located on the pod, property. Linda Erv, Ervie, I'm saying, Ervie?
Ervie.
Yes, I would like to refer you all to extend the time period. I am currently paying through June twenty-second for the rental of the pod. Uh, it is not a permanent thing. I'm trying to downsize possessions and, uh, either, uh, recycle or reduce or, uh, reuse and trying to avoid, um, putting things in the landfill. My, my current plan is for a yard sale on the seventeenth of May, weather permitting. And then at that point, I would, uh, anything that is left over would be given to charity on the Boyd's Hill. And then the pod would be picked up back at home. Council discussion?
I have a question. Do you have a current plan?
I, uh, the ordinance was enacted after I had the pod off in the session.
Council discussion?
Did you get a copy of the order?
Yes, that I got a mail copy. Not that I understood everything that was in there.
A legal jury?
Yes.
You saw that the thirty days, the last thirty days with the council approval?
Yes, I did.
Or on the.
I was.
You asked me for what?
I, I've been in this for since twenty-eight years and I'm trying to, uh, downsize. I recently went through the, uh, my mother-in-law's death and it took us a year to empty her house, and I'm trying to avoid that for my daughter.
But by the end of May?
I, the seventeenth of May is my gold date for a yard sale.
You don't know?
Yes.
Thirty days, if you're good with that.
Uh, the end of the day.
How about the end of, how about the sixth of May? I mean, I, I recommend if we give, if we give it to the end of May.
So it's only a discussion, that's all, good, cap? But if, yes, we have any discussion at night, so we'll move on with the motion. Will I put it on the floor?
I'd like that motion then, but to give her an extension, I think this ordinance, ordinance number fourteen, zero, one, oh, nine.
Keep going.
Pod, on pods, and then presidential thing with, uh, do May, very first. You got thirty-first day?
Yeah.
Thirty-first day.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilman Trimmer to, uh, grant Ms. Halesby an extension on the file order number one, four, zero, one, two, oh, nine, uh, through the end of May, May thirty-first. It's the exact, it's number fourteen. You'll have a second, sir. Second by Councilman McRae. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. You have a question?
Uh, do I now have to have a permit or am I right? Thirty-two, since I. All right. Thank you very much. Enjoy.
Okay. Item. Item E, consider an active call on the resolution amendment to the city council meeting starting at six AM for seven years on Thursday, Thursday, each month.
Yes, yes. It's for you, not for me.
Another motion? I don't have, I don't have a PM on here. There we go. Six PM, wouldn't have one else. Six PM to seven PM.
I'll make a motion that we leave it at six o'clock. I'll second. I've heard a lot of, a lot of applause from God. A lot of people I've given on boards and it's very weird.
We have a motion. I thought we'd call for discussion first, but that's the way I need to do it. So we can have the discussion first, then we call for motion.
Could we get it to six thirty? Cause some people get caught in traffic and can't make it six o'clock. I mean, cause I've had people tell me that they can't make it six o'clock because it's impossible. They don't get off till maybe five-thirty and then they work across town in the traffic. Sometimes you get, you have to wait three lights just up here at Grigsby to get through off of the freeway. So what if we split the difference to six thirty?
My personal preference, um, is, happily, I talked to one of the council person, I talked to one of the council person about this. If we can always move an item within the back, we spend here, calling until eight o'clock. Whether we have to continue the process, but personally, it's being late, so I want to call, we have to say, oh, we'd rather wait on that, you know, I, me personally, I like it at six o'clock. Just do my own schedule, set my schedule, be in different, different, but it's about nice to get it going. And so. Okay, I call for a motion.
There was a.
No, it's a motion, right. Okay. So we have a, we have a motion to leave the meeting starting at the first, third, fourth, each on six PM. Do I have a second?
Yes.
So it's second, right? And I'm here, Council, uh, Councilman McRae. Uh, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have a vote?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. All opposed?
No, I'm in favor.
For the record, we have Councilman.
No, no, I'm in favor.
You're in favor? Okay. The motion stands to be dismissed.
Linda, did you get all of that?
A new series.
Do you need to ask how they vote?
Everybody, all in favor? Everybody, all in favor? I'm, I'm F. Consider an active call setting a set time and date for a workshop to discuss fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, fifteen city budget.
I, I wanted to make a, a comment on this before you, you address this. My understanding is the city of Chinagrove has a fiscal year that begins April thirtieth and begins May first. I don't know how long it operated that way. Uh, it may have operated that way since you became a city. Most cities have a September thirtieth end date and an October one beginning date. And you, you can do it this way. But typically, when you doctor budget, you also doctor tax rate. You usually do it at the same time. And you cannot adopt your tax rate in April, for me. You, you don't even need your tax rolls until July twenty-fifth, this is when the appraisal district has to deliver them. So as you consider this item, a suggestion would be to consider amending your, your current ordinance and, and look at possibly conforming to, I would say ninety-nine percent of the cities have a September thirtieth end date, October one beginning date. It's just a lot easier to do it that way. You get your notices out, the Comptroller, the Truth in Taxation Act sends out all these notices. Everybody can follow that calendar. You know when the public hearings have to be. You know when you have to publish things. What you can do is have a, a series of budget amendments extending your, your current budget for thirty-day increments until you get to the end of September thirtieth, then adopt your new budget. Now, I want to make it clear, you don't have to do it, but I think it's an administrative burden on a city who doesn't have a lot of staff to try to keep that stuff organized. And there are a lot of, there are a lot of dates on public hearings and I, I really don't know how you can do it this way without driving yourself crazy. And that, that's just what, what I would recommend with the council considering. And having said that, you can still have your workshop. That may be one of the, you know, talk about at your workshop.
Can we, if we did do that, my question to you is, you said we just would extend it, then we just operate, hold, we operate.
We have budget amendments.
But we'd be able to operate on funds and work with there?
No, you amend your budget, you extend it.
Just keep it.
Thirty-day increments until you reach the end of the, of the typical fiscal year, which is September thirtieth. And then you can adopt your, 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 uh, budget and tax rate at the same time, which is the way. My recommendation is you do that. I think it's a lot easier. And, uh, I, again, I don't know why it was done this way. Maybe that's what they did and, you know. Uh, a lot of the standardized stuff came along, you know.
Later.
Later, after the city, maybe the city just thought, maybe that's where the city started. I don't know. That's what we adopted your budget. But, uh, I, I, I do recommend.
Council discussion on the item?
So every, uh, every meeting then, one of our agenda items would have to be to approve the next thirty-day budget?
You can do it in longer increments.
Oh, longer increments, okay.
That, that brings you in sync with everybody else.
So then like about August, then you should try planning our next budget workshop for the next fiscal year.
Typically, typically cities start doing their budget stuff in July, August, and then they adopt it in September. Uh, at the end of September.
Any other discussion? Do we want to set a date tonight? Do we just want to take this until we decide when?
Well, we're gonna have to do something because your budget's.
Okay, so, and what do we want to do with the workshop? Do we want to schedule?
Can I ask you a question? Fire, we, you know, we just purchased a new fire cook and we set up the yearly payment to come in June because the budget started in May. How are we gonna be able to work that out? Cause the banks come.
You just include it in next year's budget?
Yeah, but I'm talking about in June.
You, you put that in the, you put it in the amended?
Yeah.
So it'd be amended in next, okay.
You amend your budget, you adopt your, the budget by ordinance, you amend it by ordinance. And in the amendment, you can set for what the, what those payments have to be.
So what you're saying tonight, we do need to set basically.
They need to do something like, right away.
Council? We want to keep the work going. We want to set a date or?
Well.
Sixty days.
We, yeah. You want to amend the thirty days for workshop? I have motion on the floor to amend the, on actually whole.
Let, let, let me suggest something. At the next, your budget is gonna end at the end of this month. If you don't do something, you can't spend any money operating further.
So we need to have a work, before, before May first?
What, what I would suggest is you have a, a workshop, any special meeting during that point. At that point, you can adopt your amendment, kick it out further until you bring it in line with the.
September thirtieth.
September thirtieth.
So, so in two weeks or so, we need, we need to have special meetings.
That's, what, what works for everybody? Can we bring on a day here? Can we buy a little rappel?
I, I can tell you I'm available on the third, Thursday.
Third, third day of this month? The work, the main work for you? Does that look like for the rest of the council?
Seventeen?
No, seventeen, not the seventeen.
April seventeen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, eighteen is a surprise.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, you, you need to do something because you're shut down when your budget...
Kathy? The work, okay, then I need a budget, I need a motion to, uh...
Yeah, yeah, that's only third.
It's only third, you're not...
Ooh.
Because Easter's the twenty-seventh, something like that, it's just the twentieth.
I'll go pay with that.
You need to get that down to a level?
I'll go with this one, I think so.
I, I...
But I'll prepare it in three weeks, Miss Linda?
How could we do it?
To, to your question, Ms. Rips, uh, there, there probably won't be much workshop going on. It would just be a discussion, and then you will adopt your ordinance, stay in the budget out. And then, as you get towards the end of, of, of July, then you'll start to nervous on all your faces.
Yes, I need you to read, stand in motion, make a...
Call our motion. Set a motion, I will, I will move to, um... The set, need, the set being for the workshop, um, which would be for the seventeenth, what do you say? Seventeenth, uh... April?
Sixteenth.
I have a motion on the floor to vote our workshops meeting on April seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, at six PM, to discuss the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, city budget, do I have a second? Is by Councilman Rips?
Doesn't the special meeting have to be on, or is it a workshop?
Americans call a special meeting, yeah.
Do I have a mayor? Do I have a second, Councilor, sorry, here, Councilman McGray, second, if I counted it, Rips, call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All of both. Motion carries. Okay, we now motion to move into the rest of session, Texas Code, Texas Department Code, Section five-five-one, one-zero-seven-one, uh, application with the attorney, uh, section five-five-one, two, one, seven, four, personnel. Uh, Item A, uh, African municipal police chief, and we can as municipal chief's chief, and C, possible requirement of the municipal chief, apply now is... Seven forty-five, now, is seven forty-six.